Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this regular board meeting of Dundee Township for June 2025. I call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Trustee Dave?
Here.
Trustee Drake?
Here.
Trustee Fixer?
Here.
Trustee Harney?
Here.
Super Fraser Shaw?
Here.
I ask that you all rise and join in the meeting of the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Kaufman, if you can please lead us. Do you want to come?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is public comment.
Okay, so Ken Schaefer?
Thank you. So, two couple things. I know last month we talked about the stream banks, the living channel along Shaw Creek. And I just wanted to bring up the fact that there's at least one private instance movement. There are three private warrants for Shaw Creek property in that area. I don't know what the extent of the stabilization was going to be done. But also you have a Dundee Township dam. And you have the road district plus the IDNR with the reserve status there. And I just want to make sure that those items are covered. And you get permission from all those individuals to essentially proceed and then funding for grants. I'm not sure government grants will be able to be gotten for those private entities that are involved in that area. And then my second concern when I started looking at this is the, there is a strip about thirty feet wide that goes up onto the forest preserve property, but a part of the land and water reserve that runs from just north of Genver East and south of Commerce Drive. And I believe that on the second page, I believe that is very, can't really see it very well, but I think that involves it. But the land and water reserve affects the township, forest preserve, and the other entities that are there. But I don't want that status to be jeopardized by anything that's done in that area. So, just for consideration, and I didn't see it on the agenda for vote tonight, but I just wanted to bring it up for consideration. Thank you.
Mark Abellar?
Good evening. I'm Mark Abellar, and I am speaking in an unofficial capacity as a private resident of Dundee Township of one over thirty years. I want to bring to the Township Board and the general public some concerns I had with a public comment made before the mental health board last Thursday night by Supervisor Shabali Shaw. And it was one of those things where mental health board members looked at each other, and we were threatened. I don't appreciate threats, and I don't think anybody else does either. The mental health board is a semi-autonomous board. We, based on statute, and that was changed back in 2023, effective the first of the year in 2024. I was working with state legislator on that legislation. And it concerns me that when someone threatens to strip the mental health board of access to the township, access to the meeting room, access to accounting services, and access to anything that is currently used in cooperation, it's a real concern. And I look to you as trustees is that it's the township board's decision to, comes to the township's assets. It's not one person's. So I want to ask you, and as you listen to the reports this evening, you have a copy in your packet, I think they're going to be read later on. But we had real accomplishments compared to what was said concerning laptops and tablets and stuff like that. We had real accomplishments. And I'm not going to steal the thunder of the report, but I just want to ask all of y'all, and certainly as people make, if they want to serve on the mental health board, I think I set a decent example. Over a year, I was attending in-person mental health board meetings in order to learn what is really going on. We touched upon, the mental health board touched upon fee for service versus capacity. And there's a reason why fee for service was the adoptive model to use. And since that was brought up, and that was the crux of the threat, and to learn that the supervisor went around the mental health board and talked to the agencies, and apparently said that they wanted to go to capacity, but has not been able to be confirmed. If that list of who she talked to could be shared, and definitely work with the township board representative, Sue Harney, who was appointed last meeting, let's get to the bottom of what's really going on. The mental health board is doing great work. Can't it be better? Yes, of course. But nobody takes kindly to threats. So stop making them if you are. Thank you, I give my time.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for public comment tonight?
I'll close this portion of the meeting.
I would like to move to amend the agenda. We don't have a thing on there to approve the agenda, but I would like to move to amend it. And my amendment is that we approve the Shaw Creek Engineering Contract with Living Waters under the old business, per the vote, to include this at the last board meeting. There was a five to nothing vote to do that. And I would like to also add a copy of the proposal and the contract to the minutes as addenda, yeah, addenda. And we have those, so those are available to you. And that's my motion.
I second.
Yes. Call the role.
Call the role, please.
Trustee Dave?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Super Fraser Shaw?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is presentations. This evening, we have three presentations. First, we have Kane County Board Member, Chris Kias. Mr. Kias, thank you for being here. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for having me in here. I think it shows some real civic responsibility and a lot of good things happening hopefully in the future. I'd like to congratulate, I haven't had the chance to congratulate to a public for getting into office and looking forward to see what we can accomplish and what you can accomplish in the next four years. Just a couple of things on the Kane County, because this is part of Kane County. I usually do a presentation that you've allowed me to just update a few things with the Kane County and Kane County Forest Reserve. And what I want to do, first of all, just the first thing, is to remind everyone about the federal grants that we have available for rental, utility and rental assistance for residents and landlords. We've had this grant for a number of years, and it's running out by the end of July. So you know that it's running out in July, July 2020, July 31st, 2025. This has helped more than 200 families and over 50 building owners to recoup and help pay for back rent or utilities to keep people from becoming homeless. So if you know residents who are behind on rent, if you belong to a church or an organization that has someone that is in need of assistance, this may be the program that you want to try and steer them to. Again, it's a short-term thing here. It's, it will be, I think it's three months of back rent, or actually twelve months of back rent and three months of advanced rent to help people stay in their houses or their apartments. The residents qualify by having about at least, or less than eighty percent of the average income. So, and there's a, Kane County, Pennex has an article on it. And you can also talk to Mark Benkirk of our director, Building Care Development, on this. And we want to do as much as we can over the last two years. And I'll leave you, I have a number of flyers. The top one here is a little rain, rain splashed. They ran, added an umbrella system. Has it front in English, or is it back in Spanish? You run them off, or you can find, if you talk to Julie Mann, our information officer, she can get you a PDF of this. I'll link with the clerk, or it'll be okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just link with her, she can get to you. The second one is, I know, and I'm in the transportation committee, and we, this last week, we're talking, staff presented to us that they're going to be looking at, as a request by CMAP, to look into consolidating and the organizing a county-wide ride in Kane. So I think we have different townships that do it, and different entities are doing it. And there's some areas that are missed, and some people, it's just a real hassle to try and go from Belgium to Dundee to back and forth. And so I urge you to keep open mind when you're approached to try and get a good, reasonable county-wide dial ride, a service that serves the public. That's yet to come, but we were just giving heads up that we'll be looking into that. And I don't think there's anything else unless you guys have any questions about county support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you for your service.
Mr. Barrett has some questions.
Oh, question, Chris here. What are they going to do about the water and sewer lines that came up after they lowered the river and taking the dams out?
What are they going to do? Well, all this, all this part of the river.
Put a dam back in, or are they going to take and lower it?
I don't believe they're going to put the dam back in. But I think what happened was they weren't putting low enough in the storage. So, and how they missed it, I don't know. Corps of Engineers did all the surveys. They did work on it. I think, I read the tape the other day, Carpenter still has, this company will formally drop some changes. They said that they did have a fund, so once would they get it done before anything happens? In fact, I don't know if you can see it now, the water came up from the rain. But it was really low when they were pulling the water back up the chain legs, and we were in a drought. I'm going to have this. Oh, sure. Yeah, actually, anybody else want to? Thanks for letting me do that.
Of course. Are there any questions from the board? We will move to the next presentation. Our next presentation is from Mr. Kurt Kaufman from RAK Agency Inc. Mr. Kaufman, thank you for joining us this evening. The floor is yours, sir.
Yep. Just to mention, my name is Kurt Kaufman. I'm the insurance broker for Dundee Township. So we had met to go over the benefit changes or adjustments for this year in terms of the premium adjustments are. So I was just asked to come and speak and kind of give a heads up of what's going on. So the sheet that you have in front of here, I tried to summarize things as simple as possible because insurance can be more boring than anything else. So, you see the box on the left, it is the current, so what currently is paid by the township on a monthly basis. And then in this blue line, it says Dundee Township contributes up to $909.51 per employee. That is the max right now, that is the medical plan, the dental, and the vision plans. Okay, so that's what currently the township does. On the right side, you have the same, you have medical PPO, medical HMO, dental and vision. You can see what the rate adjustments are on those, per the number of enrollees that are enrolled in the plan. And you will notice that that blue line indicates the premium goes to $965.94 per employee, of which is a $57 monthly adjustment per employee on the plan as of July 1st. Okay? We did go out to market, we looked at United Healthcare on a level funded basis, Aetna on a level funded basis. Blue Cross still is the most competitive for the township based on the enrollment that we have currently in the plan. And then one thing also to point out is that employees that do not enroll in the health insurance, they are eligible for a monthly stipend from the township. So that number is in the yellow at the very bottom. So that's $550 per employee that gets a stipend. I do not know the number of employees that get the stipend, but that is also an aspect in there. So, benefits renew as of seven one. So I'm not sure if you guys did enroll on it last time, or if you have to vote on it this time, I'm not quite sure. But seven one is the renewal date. But we just wanted to make everyone aware of what the adjustment is. So basically, $56 a month is what the adjustment is to the township per employee on the plan. Questions?
Any questions from the board?
We don't like that.
I will, no, I will let you know that since 2018 roughly, the township's premiums on a percentage basis over the course of those six years or seven years has gone up like five percent. Which is, I'm handing out rules that are going up twenty percent on a yearly basis. So, over the course of that period of time, you guys have been pretty well.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you.
We'll move to the next presentation. Mr. Juan Silva of Deluxe Metal Processing. Mr. Silva, thank you for being here. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you so much for the invitation. My name is Juan Silva, I represent an old electronics recycling company here in Elgin. I've been in business in Elgin for the last ten years. Unfortunately, it was a partnership with a bigger company that was prohibited to offer services to my community. Now that we split out for the last six months, I went over my own, seek the R2 certification from the state of Illinois to do the electronics recycling legally and be a proper way to be done. Now, when I'm by myself and have the liberty to do business whoever is around me, I start thinking about Kane County. And I want to offer my service to the Kane County townships to collect and do the truck outs to my facility, or I can even come to the township to do pickups or events at no cost to new citizens under those townships. Something that I don't think any other company is doing here. We have a Trump center here near us on 31, before we get to, well, you know, I believe it's here. But this to the Kane County. Kane County has three sites. They've got this one here in Dundee, has one in Fabia Road over in Geneva or Batavia, and they have one more in Aurora. We are too far. You have this one here, but I don't know what the charges are and how they accept the stuff, the electronics are. But I am just here to offer my services to your township, no cost, and that's supporting my community here, the Kane County. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? So the next presentation is Mr. Kenneth Cole, an ICC licensed broker of Navigate Power and Verda Solutions. Mr. Cole, thank you for being here. The floor is yours.
Thanks for having me. How's it going? Again, my name is Kenneth Cole, here on behalf of Navigate Power and Verda Solutions, and licensed by the Electronics Commission to oversee the overall supply for all utility state life and installation life. Dundee Township was actually brought to Arkansas due to your recent aggravation of the MC Square. I believe they aggravated your community until November 26. You guys were, they did price you guys out for custom, all of your residents, I believe, but that was the regularities with the pricing. You guys were not receiving the correct budgeting with them, and also they had extra charges that were increased for your residents. So, I spoke to Michelle briefly about it. So we basically will receive them, but at this point, those corrections will have to be made. Obviously, we do have to prepare in front of you guys first for the going to do that. We also understand that we have some interest in possibly solar. Dundee Township is also eligible for that. There are three different ways you guys can actually do that. Comment, present a program for your residents, and small commercial businesses for solar. It guarantees, I believe, a fifteen to twenty percent discount. Also includes federal tax credits and also great energy local credits as well. And if you guys do decide to stick with the aggravation with the ready supplier, MC Square will also implement a twenty-five percent tax credit and also subtracting the PDA adjusted charge that your residents are probably being charged now. So we do have the ability to correct that. But the ultimate autonomy is up to you guys as far as your direction. As far as your moving solar or sticking to the aggravation, we do not have the option to switch with your supplier, which in this case, we believe are the best one. In order to do the solar, we would need to see the data, which I understand can take a while, because I understand you guys have a pretty large portfolio. I believe you said it was twenty thousand plus.
If that spans over, if we could span over the population.
So we do understand that it can take a while. However, it is feasible. With installation, as far as solar panels, which is not a necessity, there is a ninety-five percent savings with that. If you guys do decide on just going through the solar field, which is already established, there's about a twenty percent discount that's through the local authority, that's guaranteed, plus nine percent tax credits. But the time for that to act is now, is when the current administration's in office. Those credits are going to be suspended nationwide and then it'll be there. But if you guys get into now, then you'd be grandfathered into our situation.
So are you like a, come on this. Are you like a private company, or are you an oversight agency?
Both. Both, nationwide. Navigate Power is just been around for a lasting time. I look at the annuals, this will be, it'll be in 2012. So technically, someone has to hold the suppliers accountable, if you will.
Okay.
But the deregulation is a good thing because it allows everyone to kind of shop wherever they want to show. Technically, there is no such thing as a good or bad supplier. It just depends on what leads to being bad. Certain suppliers can target certain usage. And that's what your brokers and consultants are trying to do. Because we're one of the townships, and this is not a surprise.
Are you affiliated in some way with like MISO and the power grid oversight for this area? I can't remember the name of it is, it's not MISO.
ICC?
Not the ICC, no. It's, there are six of them throughout the country. MISO is one of them, but it's not ours, and I can't remember the name of ours.
So, would that be Brown Energy or is it Green?
No, it's not Brown Energy, it's an acronym. It's like, it starts with a P.
Good question. I know with solar, my company does the AZI. They have the ability to installation, build solar fields, paneling.
Okay. I think that clarifies it for me.
Chris Dersch is president. He's nationwide, he could probably answer that better than I can, but I know we have AZI. We do the procurement, the installation.
What I'm talking about is regulatory agencies that regulate power and, and, you know, capacity.
Is that NCO?
It's MISO, M-I-S-O. And Midwest something, I don't know. Chris, you know this, don't you?
I'm sorry?
You know, the grid. You know, the grid people.
I know we have aggregation in the county.
No, it's not aggregation. There are four or five or six large, they're regulatory things, they, they're regulatory agencies. One of them is MISO, M-I-S-O. And the one up here, though, starts with a P. And my, and this is, I want to talk about this, because they're regulatory and you are not. Okay, that was my question, actually. I'm sorry?
Name is Mary, I S O?
Yes. Midwest, whatever it is. But actually, my question is answered because from what you've told me, you're not a regulatory agency. Okay, got it. That's what I needed to know.
Yeah, look at that now, I don't believe we have any information with them. It says they're a dependent.
Okay, thank you. That's good, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would like a written report of what's going on. I mean, this is all new.
Yeah, I was just going to tell you, can you maybe touch base again on why is it that you approached us with the MC Square? What the issue was, and what alerted ICC?
Well, technically, the complaints, the call-ins from the actual residents to combat. And at that point, combat kind of outsources to whoever, I guess, over that jurisdiction or whatever, to basically assess the situation. Once we look at it and we see that there is overage, and obviously, to protect the deregulation, something has to be done. So basically, that's how we go with it.
Will you please send us a written report, if you don't mind?
Sure.
At a later date?
Okay.
Sure. It may take a little bit.
No problem.
Guys have a lot of.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be great. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Cole. Next presentation, Sheriff.
Good evening, everyone. Different faces, but my name is Santiago Hernandez. The Township Governor for Dundee and Elgin. So as long as I get along with the bosses, they'll keep me up here. Otherwise, they'll move me around. But for the time being, I wanted to point out for May, no disturbing crime trends, at least within unincorporated Dundee Township. But all of our calls for service from our website, again, that's kainsheriff.com. Couple of things I wanted to point out that not exactly are happening within Dundee, but happen over the entire county, is a lot of scams. We get a lot of calls still of people calling others, telling them they have warrants and spam back the good cards. If you guys haven't seen, for the past two years, almost already, they don't have cash bond in Illinois anymore. So that's not really true. And the other thing is not really a scam, but more soliciting. We do see a lot of soliciting. Good solicitors know that they should get permits in their respective jurisdictions. So if they're in West Dundee, East Dundee, within unincorporated Kane County. If there's ever any concerns, of course, you can call the sheriff's office or your unincorporated neighborhoods. And another thing is from June 20th through July 7th, that encompasses three weekends. Thanks to the state, we'll be having a little bit more on special roll. More on midnight weekends. It's for the Quicker or Ticket campaign. So we will see a lot of us out there trying to apprehend drivers that are impaired. I don't think anyone has a problem with that. And also, if anyone else sees any of that kind of stuff on our roadways, you can always call 911. You're just helping us make our streets safer. Any quick questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
I know that soliciting, they have to get a permit. Do people have to get a permit if they're passing out notices? And I know people who are doing political things don't need a permit, is my understanding.
So soliciting at least within the county ordinance is like going to a door for sales and orders? So I don't think it's a political for.
For someone who's just doing a notice, like a public interest notice or something? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Well, my guys are tied up, so I gotta run out, all right? But thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is reports, supervisors' report. Currently in Wrighton Kane, we have a grand total of four hundred and thirteen members. We've consulted, revised our website, and we found out that we can only post four items at a time. With the result, we have to go back to just compiling everything in a PDF. So whatever fits in there, that's basically what we're able to share at the moment. Open Space, I will be working with Foreman Kirby for a one-year plan. So it'll be a three-part plan. First part will be where we will decide on where it is that we want to see, we see ourselves in one year from now. The second will be to conduct a comprehensive inventory of all necessary equipment, materials, and vehicles required to achieve those objectives. The third will be to review and plan the associated financial requirements. Dan provided a detailed overview of herbicide when I was on site, weekly operational planning, and equipment storage at the barn. His input was extremely informative. Thank you, Dan. Cemetery crew, the cemetery part here, the cemetery crew has been performing well. Eric, the cemetery manager, is in regular communication with me, and I'm present on site for all significant matters. I will also work with him on a one-year plan, similar to Open Space. Last but not the least, we are working with our audit team and our payroll team to, well, we're going to try to go for a GFOA certificate of excellence in financial reporting by Government Financial Officers Association. That would be all for the supervisors' report. The next one is accessory.
Good evening. My name is Mike Belec. I'm the Dundee Township accessory. I think I know most everybody in here. And it's a good turnout tonight, and I'm happy you're not here to see the accessory office. It's a joke.
Work, work on it after.
I don't work on it. Skip the jokes. All right. We've, this past month, we've been busy working on a special project that we did this year, finally. We worked on Max. We worked on Maxville Rock, third conservancy agency, twelve acres, southeast portion of the township. We went out on-site, we met with, what's it called?
Carrie Luft.
Pardon?
Carrie Luft.
That doesn't, Clark?
Oh, Clark Gantry.
Probably, Clark, he was one of the persons there, yeah. Anyways, we inventoryed all the property, there were over thirty some buildings there. We just made sure we had everything on record, in a proper account, or a proper parcel. As you can imagine, twelve hundred acres takes up a lot of parcel numbers. There's different coatings, miscoatings, and so forth. We're still working on it. I do not see any changes coming for any assessment. We, we did not omit anything. I've talked with Mark Armstrong, Kane County Supervisor Assessments, about this somewhat. He usually sends out, or will begin sending out applications for exemptions on an annual basis. He hasn't started yet for everybody, but as time goes on, that will, that will happen. Our office does not send out the exemption applications. But it was a big process, took a lot of process, took a lot of work to get ready for. We had burials and maps, and took our iPad out there and just coordinated where we were, what's on the site, what the sketch looks like. It was a good little effort, good little effort. It's, it's been over ten years, probably twenty years for somebody who's really out there looking at, taking inventory. But most of it's exempt, there's, just parts of it are taxable, it's partially taxable. How's that? Some of the staff is also now going to training at Rockford. Person, or another, we have different persons who are different week, or different class. Training happens throughout the year in different parts of the state. Primarily, we go in the spring to the annual conference for the assessors, Illinois Assessment Association of Assessment Officers. Also, we're working on new construction now, we have residential, I've been mentioning, new townhomes, new single-family residences. We've been having to go to the municipalities for plans, because they are no longer willing to share them electronically. Legally, I guess, there's problems with that, so we're having to go visit the site, visit the municipality. We take a, we get our measurements from the plans, then we go out to the field and double check them. So we have to do that part of it, too. But as you can see, there's a lot of new construction over there, not a residential, so it's been shifted. We've also had, there's about two hundred permits that are coming in on those residential properties, too. Myself, I've been doing some assessed value projections for some proposals for Hager property, and also for Iron Flats. I've visited some of these proposals several times over the past several years. So hopefully, one of these times it'll take, and they'll get some people. Also, I've been dealing a little bit with property tax appeal settlements. Interacting with the property tax attorneys, and we came down to board review members for, for those also. And also working a little bit in the financing, just double checking the numbers and coatings of records. I've sent Tom's a couple of corrections, and we could that straightened out. And also, yeah, reinstating the credit card accounts, that was a little challenge there. They have a new credit card now, our old credit card was canceled with the old administration, so they have to reinitiate a lot of platforms that were coming through, so. Other than that, put that down in the agenda, there's an item for approval of assessor or vehicle purchase. That would be my request to purchase a two thousand and twenty-four Ford Maverick. It's a hybrid, small pickup truck. Seats four, has a bed in the back, also a small bed. It's a little different choice than what we're currently driving, so the deputies have problems seeing through the windshield than before, that I don't understand why, but they do. So I think this vehicle's fitting for the township, it's a hybrid. We didn't have enough money in the budget to purchase an electric vehicle, so a hybrid, I think, was the best choice, second choice. I've asked around numerous people at gas stations, I've seen them ask about the hybrid. They all enjoy it, it should be a good vehicle, it's American-made. The township needs it, whatever, for whatever projects. Sometimes the township does like, it makes them, what do you call it, trunk or treat? They're traveling also, you know, walking music, whatever. I asked that to the board to prove that, so put that down.
Thank you, Assessor.
Any questions?
How much more do you need to purchase, purchase an electric pickup?
Those are around fifty.
And how much is this one?
This one's thirty-four, or six.
And why do we need a pickup, and not just a regular car?
Well, we want something raised up, so we can, few pictures from the vehicle, it's also sedan's lower. We currently have a sedan, we are trading it, and it's a two thousand and ten Ford Fusion, so it's a fifty-door vehicle.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Assessor. Our next report is from the Highway Commissioner.
I have nothing to add, my report misses everything.
Any questions for the Commissioner?
Don't have a chance to see my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next is the Clerk's report.
I will be attending training from the POI Cars Association this Saturday on June twenty-first. So we've been forward to that. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, next is Trustee's report. Trustees, anyone report?
I do. Okay, I have a couple of things here. I attended the Summit Square condominium board meeting, and the cleaning fees for the common areas have gone up. The condominium board approved an increase for the cleaning fees after getting two additional quotes that were significantly higher, and I believe it's the same company as that we use here. So you'll see some of those quotes later on. Let's see, there's a request from Gallery Six Eleven owner, Landi Sanusi, to, she requested a, that the comment, that the condominium association would pay for a third weekly cleaning to clean after her events, which was discussed for a bit and not decided upon. And there are repairs to the fire, the exit signs and other fire things have been completed by the foundation, which is one of the property owners there, and they are awaiting inspection and approval. I also, I'm going to talk about the mental health report, but I wanted to briefly address, Ken, your issues, and they are good. None of the, the inholdings, which you see here are outlined in blue, there's one on, on the north edge of it with two houses on it, and then there's an inholding in the middle that looks weird, it's got like a handle on it and everything. Those are private property owners. We work with them, normally, there's a discussion with them, and in the past, the private inholding in the middle, they have not wanted to work with us, so they, they're not included in the, in any project or anything, and their land is not touched, of course. The other owner is the widow of Pat Shaw, and they have undertaken extensive work in the past, which unfortunately is failing because of the erosion. And so they are being represented by open lands, and open lands isn't on the discussion. So we are aware of those things, and, and that's, and they're being accounted for. Obviously, the township would not pay for anything that, that is theirs, and what the grants cover, that, that's up to the granting organization. The other things that you talked about, Ken, which is the, the, what's owned, the Four Winds Creek Park, which is owned by Kane County, the Kane County Forest Preserve, they were exploring being a partner with them as well. They've been on discussions and everything. So again, that would be up in the air, but everybody's very careful about making sure that they stay on their own property, and when, this, this is all navigated through with the grants and the applications and everything. And the Conservation Foundation is working with us to do those grants, and they're, of course, also very, very aware. The status of the reserve status and everything is not threatened by any of this. Because all, again, all of that, this is a very complex project, and all the applications, you know, everybody in the world has asked. I mean, when we did it before, there were like six agencies that grant approval. So, you know, that, that always looked at during the granting process and everything. The last thing I want to talk about is the mental health board.
I just asked about the clear cutting that's happened on the section between Counter Stride and, I think it's Counter Stride and General Creek Stride. There's a thirty-foot slot that is, blows up completely.
And you know, I don't know anything about that, that would be, I think that would be the county, wouldn't it, Chris? It might be utility easement.
My understanding was utility, there's an easement through there.
Right, but it's clean and water-reserved, and they, they have these gap data permissions for many, you know. That's kind of fire for me.
I'll check, I'll check, I'll check it out.
Appreciate it.
Okay. I wanted to, I was not able to attend the mental health board meeting earlier, in, early in the week, because I was out of town, but I did listen in and did not vote, in case anyone cares about that. The wards were from the Family Services Association for fourteen thousand dollars, ABC Counseling for sixty-three thousand, and the Echo Center for sixteen thousand eight hundred. And I believe the report is published online from the, the mental health board. So you will, you know, if you want to look up and see what those were for, there was an additional round of grants that were sent out, and that's with these, these grants. So that leaves the mental health board with about eighty-seven point seven percent of their money that they've allocated out now. So if there's been some question in the past about the fact that they were sitting on a fair amount of money, well, it's, it's almost ninety percent of it is now out helping people, or will be out as the, the services are provided. Let's see. Bylaws amendment was passed, which now mirrors the bylaws at the township, which allow, will allow in the future, remote attendance by people who qualify under the state regulations. And let's see, of course, I was welcomed. I think I did want to address Supervisor Shaw's comments and everything. I think it's important for everyone to remember that the seven oh eight board is, as, as Mark said earlier, is a quasi-independent board, and there are protocols and laws that govern how members are placed on that board and how they can be removed. And so I think maybe we at the township can address what kinds of equipment and space accommodations we are willing to make. Currently, the, Jarrett Sanchez is the administrator, and his, his office is over across the hall. That's one of the things that we discussed at the condominium board meeting, because that room does not belong to the township. It belongs to either the condominium board, or it belongs to the foundation, the Dundee Cares Foundation, and that is being ascertained at this point. So as far as I know, the, Jarrett is planning on staying in that office, at least for the time being, until the ownership is settled, and then the mental health board will be negotiating with whoever the owner is to decide whether to stay in the office or not. And I would like to echo Mark's remarks also. The seven oh eight board is a couple of years old, I was on it in the beginning, and it's a board that is trying, has pulled itself together from the very beginning. It has been severely compromised by the fact that the original board, when their terms were up, they did not continue on the board. All the board members are new, and of course, when that happens, then everybody has to be brought up to speed again, and they have to learn the ropes. This is a complex thing. It's hard to remember that the seven oh eight board is not a board that at this point provides services directly. They do not have the capacity to do that. All the board members are volunteers, they have received no compensation or anything like that. And so they are there frequently, and first, they have to be brought up to speed and learn about the complexity of this. And then secondly, they have to, you know, the grants are given out to provider organizations like Family Services, Echo Center, ABC, and those things. And then the way that happens is that the seven oh, yeah, the seven oh eight, I'm keeping the board straight in my mind, I'm sorry, I have to think each time. The seven oh eight board sends out sort of like a request for proposals, if you will, for services. The associations like Family Services come back in, and they say, here's what we need, and here's how much we think it'll cost. And then all of them are, the model they use is a fee-for-service, and that's really the most efficient model. We actually, I went out in the beginning with the seven oh eight board when I was first on it. We went out and interviewed a number of administrators for existing boards that had long histories. There's a number of boards that have been in existence for like twenty years or so. And all the ones that we talked to use a fee-for-service type of payment arrangement. Because it's, we have to be very certain that the people, the clients that we help are living in Dundee Township. That needs to be checked regularly. So it, it's quite an administrative thing to not only get the grant out, but then to monitor the grant and make sure that the money is going for services that, that are being provided to Dundee Township residents. And as I think a really good example, the, the bill from ABC Counseling Services was sent back for refiguring, because one of the coding and things indicated that it was for domestic abuse. And the seven oh eight board is by statute not allowed to deal with domestic abuse cases unless there is an underlying mental health issue. So again, this is a complex thing, it requires a lot of thought, and you have to kind of marshal your thoughts and make sure. So I want to actually applaud the people who have done this, both the ones that were there before, Paul Sets is in the background here, and the people who are there now, Joe Connell and Mark are in front of us. There's been a great deal of effort, lots of, of people that are genuinely trying to help. And so I think we need to give them space, because they're, they've been in constant turmoil over the past couple of years. I think they have their feet on the ground now, I am looking forward to working with them again. I hope that after a bit, somebody else on the board will take this over, because I really would like to go play more. But we will, we will figure that out. And so, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
You're clapping because I'm done, aren't you?
No.
No?
That was perfect.
No? Okay. So that concludes our trustee's report. We will now hear from the departments, Open Space Department, Dan Kennedy.
Hi, my name is Dan Kennedy, I'm with Open Space, and I'm here to read Kirby's report, because he's unable to make it tonight. And if you guys want to interrupt during this, anytime, that's fine. As we are approaching the official beginning of summer, the weather has turned more summer-like. Conditions remain very dry, though. With the growing season in full force, Open Space has been largely focusing our efforts on non-native invasive plant management, as well as trail and other general property maintenance. Some new oak trees were planted at a few different sites, including a memorial tree for the Open Space First Stewards. Also, the month, this month, we welcomed a new face, John Solis, to the Open Space, and we're happy to have him on board. The photos below highlight some of the work done over the past month on Open Space lands. Yellow sweet clover, knotty thistle, and leafy spurge pictured above from left to right. All these plants are shown in flower, this is one of the challenges of restoration work, is preventing these plants from reproducing. However, some plants, you can't, you can't just simply cut the heads off. Plants also spread underground via their root systems vegetatively. Restoration protocols for plant management include a variety of tools to help us with this task, from mechanical, chemical, manual, and with fire. There's three more pictures. Additional plant species targeted include crown vash, reed canary grass, and motherwort. In the case of reed canary grass, if we find it in advanced stage, and it is in enlarged clusters, we, whereas the dominant vegetation, mowing the plant down and waiting to spray after some regrowth can be beneficial and more effective way of controlling this wetland invader. This was the case with some reed canary grass controls down in the Juggie area. Here's two more pictures, spotted napweed and bird's foot trefoil, seen here... Here's two more pictures, spotted napweed and bird's foot trefoil seen here with the blue tracker dye in the prairie at Snuffy's, that the dye is used so we can more easily see what plants have been treated. There's two more pictures, hacklia. Picture here is a patch of hacklia of salamander before the herbicide, drawn after the herbicide treatment. This plant is also one that can be handled when found in much smaller numbers. Follow-up work will be done to make sure there is no more regrowth, and native seeds will be introduced into the area. Brown leaf bittersweet is one of the worst invaders, invasive species we deal with as it is growth, as, as its growth habits are aggressive, and it does not confine itself to the woodland only. These pictures above are from prairie settings at Salamander and Dixie. In the woods, this vine will run along the ground and then up a tree where it'll wrap itself around the trunks and branch eventually severely altering the tree's growth or possibly killing the tree. In the prairie setting, the vine acts similarly. It will run along the, it'll run along open field until it finds something it can start to wrap itself onto, whether a bush or herbaceous plant with stronger stems. Sometimes it clusters with other prairie plants where it crowds out native plant species. Mowing for conservation practices can be a useful tool. As mentioned before, it can cut down on spraying heights and help with herbicide effectiveness with such plants as reed canary grass. It can also help to eliminate wood plant invaders when timed correctly and in conjunction with appropriate follow-up work. This field at Salamander Springs is being reforested with a variety of native oak species. Woody invaders and even some herbaceous plant species are being managed right now through mowing protocols. This will aid the oaks in their growth and help to provide a better environment in which to seed inappropriate native forb and grass plant species. After the mow, as we started to see regrowth come back to the target plant species, we will follow up with herbicide treatments. Here's a previously cleared hillside at Salamander Springs. Needed follow-up mowing for woody invaders, as well as a host of other non-native plant species trying to reestablish themselves. The weed seed bank in the soil can be extensive for years to come, so this is, so this and any type of follow-up work after an initial clearing activity is important. Here's three pictures of some oak trees. Left to right, we have a red oak, a bur oak, and a white oak planted at Salamander, Dixie, and Library. Additional oaks were planted along with these ones. A white oak was especially, was, was an especially favorite tree for one of Open Space's founding stewards, Mr. Dave Petzel. With his passing, the family inherited a white oak in his honor, along with a plaque to acknowledge his hard work and dedication to this site. The growing season means trails are being mowed on a weekly rotation. Litter and garbage are cleaned up at least once a week. A new property gate was installed at Dixie on, at Longstrom Lane. This replaces the table that was in place earlier as the old farm gate had finally broken down too much. Lastly, we welcome John Salas to Open Space. John has been with us for a few weeks and has transitioned well to Open Space work after coming over from the cemetery. A quick learner and a hard worker, John should do well. Much more to come. Enjoy the summer, and thanks for your support. Greatfully, Kirby.
Any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. How are this, how is the situation with the bicycle incursions on Dixie? And have you guys put up the baffles at the five entrances?
We have not put up the baffles, and we've just been through, the stewards and, and volunteers and, and Open Space have just been, you know, trying to approach these people and explain why it's not a good idea and why it's actually, you know, prohibited.
Okay, how is that going?
Uh, it's going good.
Has the, has the traffic decreased?
Uh, I don't know, I don't have the data on that.
Okay. Have the motorcycles been back?
Haven't seen any motorcycles, just a lot of e-bikes.
Okay. Supervisor Shivali, is there a reason that the baffles are not?
We did the farm gate, and that cost approximately six hundred dollars in material and man-hours, and there was no data to prove that that, along with the pedestrian fences, will actually resolve the issue. So Dixie is, I believe, forty-seven acres, if I'm not mistaken?
No, it's more like a hundred.
Okay, well, there you go.
It's, it's five entrances, and from my discussions with Carol Weinhammer, the bicycle incursions are happening, happening at the other entrances. And in the past, the baffles have been a very effective way to stop bicycles. They allow people to come in, but you can't get bikes through. And so I, I would like to see by, those baffles put in. I know it's expensive, but there's money in, in the budget to do that, and it's really important.
That's true, but it also takes a lot of effort, and it is expensive. In addition to that, it also hinders their equipment. From when they have to work on other things, it hinders their progress with that. But, and also, there is no data to prove that off-road vehicles cannot otherwise penetrate the land.
I don't know why we need data for that.
That, that's from saying.
In, in the past, it has worked. That's, you know, of course.
So then why are they not there?
Because we had, we, we would not have this problem before.
But you said in the past, it's worked.
It's worked in other places. It's worked at Raceway and other places. We have been able to, we've done a couple of things in the past when we've had these incursions and, in, in other sites, and those do work. The gates are, the roads should be protected with gates, and that's where the equipment goes in. But, you know, they shouldn't be driving trucks in on the, on the, the entrances that are, the, the public entrances. I would like to see those baffles there. And, you know, I, I, did, did anybody price out how much a baffle is? I mean, we're talking.
I didn't.
What we're talking maybe is twelve linear feet of fencing, and you just, you know, you put it in, you put it, it's like a U-shaped piece of fencing, and there's a, a piece in between of it. So you have to walk in and then make a sharp turn, and then make another sharp turn, and a third sharp turn, and then you walk out. And so what it does is, it just, you can't get a bike through it very easily. Those are used, if, I'd like, I'd like to know, you know.
Wouldn't that be a liability issue for handicapped, say, for example?
No, it wouldn't, because they can get in other places. People who have handicapped entrance issues can contact the, the township and get in through the gates. They could, they can be allowed in through the gates. And again, in the past, when we've done this, this has not been an issue with, with handicap accessibility. Those trails are not very handicapped accessible. The places that we do have handicap accessibility, you know, don't have that kind of entrance. So for a person in a wheelchair to go through those entrances, those five entrances, that would be quite a, a difficult thing to do, and a motorized wheelchair would be very difficult. We are, it's my understanding, and perhaps Mark, you can address this more thoroughly, that we are, we are supposed to provide handicapped access to part of those, of each of those sites. I'm not sure that we do. I know we do at Jucky, I believe we do at Dixie up at, at one end of it. But that can, that doesn't mean that the, it doesn't mean that every entrance has to be handicapped accessible. It just means we have to have some handicap accessibility. And that's, that's something that can be addressed in our planning, you know, for Open Space. But I would like to see those, those fences in there. Perhaps you can come back with a quote next time, and we could vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to see that also.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. So our, thank you, Dan. So our next department report will come from Eric Salas, Cemetery Manager.
We cemetery report since the last board meeting, there was a, a department's report. We've had seventeen burial from May, ten of them being cremations, six full size in the ground, and then one, one of the E. Colli Vario. Thirty-six graves saved total, and two were from the E. Colli Vario. Eighteen new cemetery deeds issued, and total sales and transactions of forty-one thousand eight hundred fifty. Just some notes. The, the approval for the marking and layout of opening of six hundred and twenty-two roof plots is, is scheduled to be, work started, start next week, if, if weather, weather permits. The, our nineteen eighty-nine Ford excavator backhoe is currently non-operational and has all sorts of mechanical issues. It is a new machine, but it was, it was our backup excavator. It was our main excavator while, while JCB was out, which is our, our, our main excavator at the moment, was out for repairs that took, I want to say, maybe four to five months. And if we wouldn't have had that excavator as a backup, we would have to outsource our excavators, which we did, partly. And then a two thousand nine Toro sixty-inch mower is also non-operational, and we sent it out to help to, to get it looked at. Thirty-six new graves getting black dirt, seed fertilizer, and blanket, and projected to be completed at the end of six twenty. More than ninety percent of that has actually got completed this week. It's projected to this rain, so, so the thing we got this rain, so the grass can come in, come in sooner or later. A project and budget approved by the previous board for installing electrical into our old dirt building, and the gas pumps that are currently hand-cranked are, are waiting USIC for, and locating services to dig a trench due to the services of ComEd, Metro Pivernet, and the Kane County Emergency sirens being located really, literally quite right in the middle where the, where the proposed trench is supposed to go through. So the, the start date is still to be determined on that. Aside from that, any other questions?
What's a hand-cranked gasoline? Is that like an antique?
It's.
It requires two people at a time to crank it.
Never seen one.
Yeah. It's on the concrete slabs, it's basically barrels on concrete slabs, yeah.
Yeah, they have them there.
Yes, and the.
They do.
Yeah, and the electrical, the one garage, or, for the lack of better words, garage storage area, they actually have to go in there with flashlights. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so that concludes our board, uh, our, sorry, department reports. Our next item on the agenda is approval for meeting minutes. Approval of March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, public hearing meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there, okay. So the motion is made by Trustee Day and seconded by Trustee Drake. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't there.
Um, Supervisor Shaw?
Uh, yes. Okay, that motion carries, and March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, public hearing meeting minutes are approved as presented. Next item is approval of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular board meeting, Board of Trustees' meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved. Okay, go ahead.
I'll move.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So the motion is made by Trustee Fixmer and seconded by Trustee Harney. Is there a discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion carries, and May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular Board of Trustees' meeting minutes are approved as presented. Next item is approval of Treasurer's Report. With us this evening is Treasurer Tom Coghlan from Government Accounting LLC. Mr. Coghlan, thank you for being here. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay. So we're through the first quarter of our fiscal year to the end of May. The revenue side, total revenue so far, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, that's sixty percent of the budget. We will, we actually saw today the large installment from Kane County come in. The township itself received just over a million dollars, and then the Road District received five hundred and eight thousand. So you'll see on my, we're currently showing that temporary deficit to be expected. We always see that before that big installment comes in. Next month, we'll see that swing to a surplus. So all good on the revenue side. Same for expenses, total expenses for the first three months, they're seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, so like thirteen percent of the budget. All of our main, big drivers' salaries and, and other services are, are right on target where they should be. All good there. So as I mentioned, temporary deficit there, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, two se, two ninety-seven. We'll see that swing up to a surplus next month, if you expect. Currently showing an ending fund balance there, four million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, four sixty-one. If you flip two pages, the page with the high grade at the bottom, just lists out our various bank accounts between First Bank and the Mill and My Funds. Sure. A book balance there, just over four point seven million. So that ties nicely with our fund balance if we did practice. Kevin, take any questions on the floor?
Open Space, which is on page eight, and halfway through, it says, there's a hundred percent on something, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, and now I can't see it very well. It says, let me see, I'm sorry.
A hundred percent? Is that where you look at it?
Yeah, it, it's communications at a hundred percent.
Okay. Yeah, I will look into that. Looks like we probably shifted those to the budget line, so I'll make sure that that gets, that gets there.
Let's see. Oh, the capital reserve fund, is it zero?
Or.
Um, I'm here again, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time seeing this because the print is very small. And I have to find the capital reserve fund, which page it's on. Help me out here with the capital. Where is the capital? Okay, which page is that on?
It's on page eight.
Okay, so it's on the same page that I was on before.
Capital Reserve of Open Space?
Um, I thought it was someplace else, and I'm sorry, I didn't mark the page on my notes. I think it's in the, the general fund, but don't we have a large capital reserve fund?
Yeah, so.
Could you tell me which page it's on?
Yeah, so we've got page fifteen or sixteen, and, yeah, page fifteen. That lists out our, our current capital budgets and activity.
Okay.
But overall, on that, that second page, that makes, that means summary page that I focus on, we've got a condo for capital, we're showing a balance of about four hundred thousand dollars for the capital reserve.
Okay.
And as part of this year's budget, we plan to shift a, a good amount from the general and then our new cemetery funds, which we're growing in excess, we're going to shift a lot of funds for capital for future projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so is there a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report as presented?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. The motion is made by Trustee Harney and seconded by Trustee Day. Is there a discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The motion carries, and the Treasurer's Report is hereby approved as presented. Next item on the agenda is audit approval of bills. Copies of bills were included in the board's packets for both April and May. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is made by Trustee Harney and seconded by Trustee Fixmer. Is there any discussion?
Um, is this the time when I present about the bill from Red Buffalo?
We'll do a second.
Do a second one, okay, all right.
Okay.
I have questions about why almost nine hundred dollars was spent with your branch.
Um, initially, I wasn't aware of it until Trustee Harney brought that up. So I was going to, I invited all officials and all our staff members. And I actually had no family members at all here. So my, I, my goal initially was, I was, I had no idea that I could even do that. And then she invited.
Catering is usually ordered ahead of time.
Yeah, like I said, I was going to pay for it, and that's why I submitted it, and I got reimbursed for it. So that's how it went, because I wasn't sure that I could even do that. But she invited a guest of hers, and that's how I found out, when she told me that, that could go on the township.
Just a lot of money for one person to get sworn in, when the four of us got sworn Just a lot of money for one person to get sworn in, when the four of us got sworn in with less than a hundred dollars.
Right, but you guys knew ahead of time, I had no idea, so.
I don't understand.
We didn't, well, we knew that we could get reimbursed for the amount, but we still spent only a hundred dollars.
Right, and I didn't know, and I happened to have a nice career, so my budget was twelve hundred dollars, actually.
Well, that should have came out of your pocket, then.
Well, it was until I found out that it could be charged to the township, because I had invited a lot of people.
Nine hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars to the tax base.
That could have paid, uh, for the upgrades at Open Spaces, the six hundred dollars that we can't come up with. We spent nine hundred dollars on catering. We have two retirements when Thrower was in, and I think it was a hundred and twenty-five in catering and two something in catering. Nowhere near nine hundred dollars.
There was a gift, and if you would like to know what the tab.
I looked through it all over, yeah, we looked it over it all, but, including the gift and a retirement and a lunch for Katie, doesn't add up anything near what you spent. Nine hundred is, in a community where people can't afford to put food on their table, you're spending nine hundred dollars on a swearing-in, and it doesn't sit right with me.
Nope.
No, doesn't sit right with any of us, I.
It just seems.
Well, so you can get a vote.
Showing too much.
So you would call for a vote? Kevin, there's a motion, and the second one's any further discussion. Or if you want to pull it out from the bills, you can do that, but it's up to you.
So motion?
So you got a motion?
Okay.
You got a second.
Okay.
And so you either call a vote, or if you want to pull it out.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
You've already got, you've already got a motion.
But, from whom?
So you have a motion from.
Harney?
Trustee Harney, and seconded by trustee Fixmer, to approve the bills as presented.
Okay, all right, so the motion, um, the motion carries and the bill.
You call for a vote.
Okay, so we'll call for a vote?
Trustee Day?
No.
Trustee Drake?
No.
Trustee Fixmer?
No.
Trustee Harney?
No.
Supervisor Shaw?
Um, yes.
I will make a motion that we, that we remove the nine hundred dollars, or that, that, that bill for whatever it exactly is, from the bills, and that we, uh, that we, we pay the rest of them.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Oh, sorry, seconded.
Is there a motion to approve?
So, is there discussion?
Is there a discussion? Okay, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Motion.
Okay, the motion carries and payment of, uh, bills is approved as presented.
By trustee Harney, and then this is the.
With those changes.
With those changes.
Not as presented.
Okay, so.
So this is the additional bill that trustee Harney submitted.
Okay, there's an additional bill that trustee Harney submitted for Red Buffalo Nursery, in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so, okay.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is, um, this is the bill, for those of you in the audience, it is for restoration work with a contractor on open space. Um, and it is by far the cheapest provider that we've been able to find, and they have been, they've done a really outstanding job, they do a lot of good work. And, um, and so this is something that we decided, but, it, we have a lot of volunteer work, but we have two people, three people now, you know, working on open space, and these contractors really help us get to a point where we've got things under control, so that's what this is for.
Okay, so. Okay, um, can we get a vote on this?
Yeah, sorry, just to clarify, uh, motion by Sue, who's seconded.
And, uh, seconded by, yeah, trustee Drake.
Uh, trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Approved as presented.
Approved as presented.
That old business, so, yep, so you get a motion to amend.
Okay, can we get a motion to amend the agenda to move to the next item, consideration of staffing reorganization to, um, the executive session portion of, uh, to after the executive session portion of the meeting? Is there a?
Motion.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make, I'll move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Drake, is there any discussion? Okay, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. The madam, uh, the motion carries and the agenda is amended.
So this is where you get the new item of old business. So the agreement, the engineering agreement?
Yeah.
They were, that was moved to, to add it to a new item.
Okay.
Here, so you would ask for a motion to, so not here, a motion to approve the F D N A.
Motion to approve the F D N A, uh, contract agreement? Can I?
All motion.
Well, it's, it's not an F D N A contract, it's, it's a.
Uh, Living Waters.
Living Waters, yes.
Sorry, my fault, yes. So the motion to, uh, approve the Living Waters contract?
All motion.
Okay, seconded?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is made by trustee Day and seconded by trustee Harney, is there a discussion? Okay, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries and the added item of Living Waters contract is, um, approved. So, the next item on the agenda is new business, approval of vehicle purchase for assessor's office. Previously, the board had allocated forty-five thousand for the vehicle procurement and computer modernization. Um, pursuant, actually, there is a document in here, right, for your.
There is?
Uh, for your purchase?
Um, no, what, don't think so.
Okay, all right, okay, so the net price to obtain a new vehicle for the assessor's office totals thirty-four, four oh two?
Uh, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-one, sorry, that's up to you.
Uh, yeah, so six twenty-two?
Six twenty-one.
Six twenty-one, okay, so the net price to obtain a new vehicle for the assessor's office totals thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Is there a motion to approve the purchase as presented?
I would like to mo- make a motion to table this, we have no details in front of us, I would like to see what you're doing, and, and just, you know, have, have some paperwork that I can all get ahead of time. And table this to the next meeting.
Okay, so what do we do, is there a motion to purchase as presented?
No, so if there's a motion to table, it would need a second.
Okay, so motion to table it, we will second, okay? So, uh, motion was made to table it by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Drake, is there any discussion?
No discussion, motion to table.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
No discussion, okay, the motion carries and the vehicle purchase for the assessor's office has been tabled to the next meeting.
We have to vote, Tony.
There you go, you can vote.
Okay, do the vote.
Sorry, I guess we'll do a vote, um.
Trustee Day?
Yeah.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yeah.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
No. Okay, the motion carries and, um, the vehicle purchase is tabled. Consideration of janitorial services for township offices. Has everyone looked at it, is there a motion to, is there a motion to approve?
Can we, can we talk about it a little bit first?
Sure.
You need a motion at this time.
Okay, okay, I'll move, I'll, I'll make, I'll move to, to approve.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right, so the motion is made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Day, um, is there any discussion?
Is the, is, are we, it says here that there's the common area near the elevator, why is, or why are we doing that? Because that's the, um, the, um.
Association.
Condominium Association, thank you, is responsible for the common areas, and so, and they are paying for the common areas. So why is this on our bill, our part of this?
Because, um, well, it shouldn't be actually, because now it is, uh, with them. Yeah, so it shouldn't be in, on there, actually, in the common areas, because the common areas are now moved there. I mean, she has a language barrier, so that's what she presented to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, normally I would like to see some other quotes from other places, but having gone through this, you know.
The, at the association, yeah.
Yeah, that the prices, there was no comparison to her prices with anything else, and there were, there were three quotes.
Yeah.
So, um, so how do we handle this?
So.
Um, can I bring up for discussion, who cleans the parking lot? Because last time I was here, there was a diaper out there.
Well, if it is after the event, then that would go to La- Landay, but, um, so you can probably add more to it, because it's hard to tell when.
Because this isn't even listed, there's nothing listed about the parking lot on here, so is it listed on the other one, or can we?
Well, it depends on what event that was.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's hard to tell what event that was, that's, you know, so.
She means, is there a different vendor that cleaned the parking lot?
Yeah.
Well, Landay, well, Landay, um, if, if it's an event, she gets it, otherwise it's a common area.
It, it's, it's a common area.
So association.
But, and she says she cleans up after her events, and, um, there is discussion about that always. And, um, yeah, there needs to be a separate vendor to, um, do that, I think.
But that would be an association responsibility.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what I would recommend, what I would recommend doing on this is to approve the prices, and I have not seen an agreement, I don't know that a agreement exists, I would recommend that there be an agreement created, so, so, so approval of the increase of the prices quoted, uh, subject to final attorney review.
Okay, so.
And you would have to move, like, as a friendly amendment, and trustee Day would have to approve it, and you could vote on that amendment. Amendment question.
I just wanted to say, I need to, before I can approve that, I need to see, like, what the prices will be when you rule out the common areas. I can't, I just can't say yes until then.
Okay, so maybe we table this until we get an amended contract that, that shows the.
Contract, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, so I will do that, I will, um, move to table this until we get an amended contract and quote.
But, the services are still good for this month, though, right?
But, so she, she, bills, she's already given us an invoice for a higher amount, so what do we do with that?
We don't approve things until it's voted on.
Until it's voted on.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And, uh, if, once it's voted on, does she get, uh?
You can vote on that at the time.
All right, okay, okay, then.
I mean, she can, at the end of the day, she can, if there's no contract, she can say, well, I'm not, I'm not going to clean for you guys, until you approve it.
Okay, we want to pay her, I mean, this isn't, we're not disputing whether to pay her, we just want to make sure we're paying for our stuff.
Okay.
And, yeah, and, and that, that there's a, a proper contract.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, then, uh, do we do a motion to table?
Get a second.
Um, motion to table, I made a motion to table.
Second?
Second.
All right, so the motion to table has been made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Drake. Um, is there, all, all in favor, um, madam clerk, please get a, a roll call?
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yep, yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yeah.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes, the motion carries and the increase in funding is being tabled for the cleaning service until the next meeting.
And you're going to table the next motion, so we can go.
All right.
You're going to move to table the next, the next item.
Okay, so the next item here is, um, resolution to adopt policy to provide additional assistance under Dundee Township General Assistance Program, which is going to be tabled until next meeting.
You make the motion.
I will make the motion for that, and can I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion, uh, has been, uh, motion to table general assistance program details as made by, uh, supervisor and seconded by trustee Day, is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, sorry, roll call, please, madam clerk?
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. Okay, motion carries and, um, the item is tabled. Okay, executive session? Okay, I move the board adjourned to executive session pursuant to.
That one, the next one.
Section two, C one of Open Meetings Act, in order to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees or volunteers of the township.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion's made by me and seconded by trustee Harney. Roll call, please.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
You got to adjourn and load the time.
Oh, so adjourned?
Yeah, go on, yeah, to executive.
To executive session at eight twenty-nine.
It's a tough one, you did all right.
All right, I call this meeting back to order at nine oh three P M. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Here.
Trustee Drake?
Here.
Trustee Fixmer?
Here.
Trustee Harney?
Here.
Supervisor Shaw?
Here. Okay, so.
Thank you for the call.
Thank you, we have a quorum, the next, we already did this.
No, you can.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of staffing reorganization, I move to adopt the staffing reorganization plan for the open space and cemetery departments as follows, and, yes. Counsel, please, take it up.
Eric Salas, thank you.
Eric Salas, yes.
So for Alec, Eric.
Alex.
Eric Salas, uh, the proposal would be to, uh, increase his hourly wage from thirty-one, twenty-four dollars per hour to thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents per hour, uh, for a total not to exceed annually of seventy-three thousand, three eighty-two, forty. And if, and, um, get a motion a second, and then you can discuss.
Okay, so can we get a motion on that?
I'll motion to approve.
Second, please.
Go ahead, Henry, give it a shot. Second.
All right, so the motion is made by trustee Day and seconded by trustee Harney, or, sorry, trustee Fixmer. Um, is there a discussion?
I would explain, I would explain why.
Uh, so, the, the reason for this is because at the last time, we were not made aware that, um, Eric Salas had not received his assistant management pay, uh, up until five-five, so he had never had a raise, but he was already working in his assistant position. And at, uh, five-five, that was supposed to take effect, but we were not made aware, so we did not get, we only gave him a dollar fifty-nine raise, um, for the manager position, so we've now basically adjusted it. So, um, okay, so is there any discussion? Okay, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
No.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes, the motion carries and staffing reorganization plan is hereby approved as presented.
No, it's a pay increase, not a staffing.
Oh, sorry, uh, well, pay increase.
But, but the motion said it was a.
The motion carries.
The motion carries, so that's what we're talking about.
So the motion carries for pay increase.
Yeah.
Um, of Eric Salas, and it's hereby approved as presented.
Okay.
Okay, so, other business, is there any other business that any board, uh, member of this board wishes to bring forward?
What's, what is this about? We had, this was in our packet. What is this about?
It's one of the, um, agreements from, remember, everybody wanted the agreements. That's for our online website hosting.
No, this isn't hosting. This is, it's cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity quote.
Clarity, oh, yeah, that's right. It's for the phones, sorry. Yeah, it's not revised. It's Clarity for the phones.
Okay, and...
Yeah.
It, it...
It's not really an agreement per se. It's just a month-to-month. We basically piggyback on the assessor. We, meaning us, the cemetery, and the assessor are all on it together.
I didn't even know it was cybersecurity. I mean, I know, I understand that, that...
No, that's for phones.
It's a cybersecurity.
It's cybersecurity.
So...
Guys, none of this was on the agenda.
Nope.
No, but these are agreements from...
They can discuss.
Yeah.
We can discuss. That, that's my question. This is in our packet, and I'm like, what's it about?
So it's not cybersecurity, as in if you are thinking about like cameras or anything, that's a different, uh, yeah. This is Clarity and J S. They actually used, used to be N J S. It's now moved, the new name is Clarity. And Clarity, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so Clari...
Same service that you, that you guys...
Yeah, so for the phones, that is what we use.
All it talks about is security.
I'm just, I don't know why we were given it.
Yeah, I, I...
We just, in the name of transparency, we gave you everything that we had so far.
Speaking of the name of transparency, I'd like to see the packets get uploaded to the website before...
We can't, like I mentioned in the supervisor's report, there's only four items that they are allowing us to put. So all we can do is we can copy, paste everything into a PDF, but you will have to just go through a long PDF. We're hoping that it'll hold it, so...
The public's asking for it.
The public, yeah.
No, I mean...
The community wants it on the website.
No, I, I, the, the caveat with the hosting, you understand what I mean, right?
Yeah, I comprehend that, but I'm just saying it needs to be available for the public as well.
We ran it on transparency.
Oh, we ran on transparency, and that's what we want.
And I'd like to see transparency on the website as well as in front of us.
Definitely, we can figure out other ways to make it work. If there, if there's a roadblock with them not allowing you to do that, there's other ways to make that work.
They've already told this, uh, yeah, but he doesn't have...
That's what you're working on, that is, that's what I understand. I think that's what she's trying to, to do that, is my understanding.
I think the previous administration had the packet on there as well, correct?
No.
There's no...
She never did until recent.
Until we started running on it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we ran on it, so we want it, so...
Well, which is fine, and we'll work on that, but like I mentioned, there, the, there is issues with the actual website being able to hold this amount of data.
We could put it on social media. It could be uploaded to the Facebook.
So we considered that, and with that, so, okay, so with Facebook, you could, if there is any violations of any sort, which, you know, we assume not to be there, but if there were, it would just be taken off. So then we wouldn't have, if that is our designated place to post, we wouldn't, we would lose that data. So it's better to, better to look at...
It would be better on the website.
Yeah, that's fine, but something needs to happen because we have people reaching out to us today, asking where it was.
Yeah, but Revise is all...
And we didn't get it till, you know, five o'clock yesterday.
Okay, so we're going to start looking at other possible websites posting, okay? Because they've already started reaching out to us because Revise already told us that they cannot, they cannot help us with anything more than four packets.
Okay, that, that is good to look beyond, yeah.
Okay, sounds good then. Alright.
Thank you.
Um, so again, where were we?
Anything else?
Oh, right, anything else for the good of the order? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Oh, Drake, uh, Drake was first.
Okay, fine, so the motion is made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Drake. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, any abstentions? Okay, so the ayes have it, and we are adjourned at nine ten P M.